Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand as we salute and pledge to an American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious God, what treasures you have set before us, a country rich with resources, a history founded on faith in you and invested in the noble principles of the American experiment. Yet, we confess that we have allowed these endowments to be destroyed by moles of malice and misdirection. We acknowledge before you that we have tolerated and even taken delight in the corrosive rust of rivalries and debate. Forgive us for taking for granted the precious gifts of life, liberty, and happiness and letting them slip from our care only to be stolen by pride and conceit. Call us back to rededicate ourselves to your mercy. You have shown us time and again. May we treasure in our hearts the privilege you have given us as Americans to serve as stewards of your bounteous love. We pray in the strengths of your holy name. Amen.
Amen. For today, you have, we have a long agenda before us. We have a regular session, minutes here, and the agenda that we will take care of here in this room, and we will be moving over to the convention center for our work session. I would like to ask if the board would consider today taking and moving two items off of the regular session agenda of Commissioner comments in the closed session and less moving those to our work session.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other, no other corrections to the agenda today? Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed, thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Are there any items that the board would like to remove from the consent agenda? You have the minutes of the March 1st meeting, the tax releases, a budget amendment for the K-9 program, and a proclamation designating April 2021 as the North Carolina 811 Safe Digging Month in Craving County. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Departmental matters, this morning we have with us Mr. Stanley Kite and representatives from the Harlow Volunteer Fire Department. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Milton Everett with the Harlow Fire Department. He has a bit of information to share with you this morning on proposals to purchase adjacent property that are built.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. Everett.
How y'all doing this morning?
All right, thank you for coming up this morning.
The Harlow Fire Department is requesting to purchase some land. It's right next to our station on Highway 101, NC Highway 101, right next to our Station 1. We're proposing to purchase that land for the future site for the, our EMS department. I gave a little pamphlet out, if y'all see in front of you in the red pamphlet, it shows the actual land on number one, and that comes directly from the real, the bank actually and the real estate agent. And number two also, I also included, number four is the actual, number three is actual the deed, and number four shows the actual permit from the Health Department for the septic system and all that that we have already on that property.
All right, Commissioners, you, this is for informational purposes only today, but as in our policy, we have the contract we have with the fire departments, they are hard to come before the Board of Commissioners to provide this information. And do you have any questions for these gentlemen today? Commissioner Smith?
I'm looking at this.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, where is the Fire Department? Is it on the left or the right when I'm saying?
If you're looking at that paper, it would be on, if you're standing there, it'll be on your left-hand side.
On my left?
Yes.
And so, does it have one plot or two? Because it looks like this is a fantastic opportunity, because this looks like, this piece of property is larger than the plots up there.
Yes, yes, ma'am, it is. That, it's actually, where that is, it's 3.7 acres, right next to, that's where the original Harlow Fire Department was originally at, when it first started. And it was sold to somebody else, but now we have the opportunity to purchase the fire to.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McCabe, I know he met, along with myself and staff, with the leadership there at Harlow, and Commissioner McCabe has thrown his support behind it and believes it is a good idea. Do you have anything to add, sir?
No, I'm saying that I think Milton and Fred and John had did, had some work on, in getting their paperwork and receiving this land from the realtor for the goodness of the Fire Department they have now. And if you use the land for future EMS and a new fire system necessary. So I want to thank them for what great work that they have done through the community of Harlow and Craving County. Well, thank you, guys.
Any other questions? I would just state, they do have sufficient funding to cover this, and so they're not asking for any money, don't have to raise the fire tax, so y'all been good stewards. So, no other questions, then we thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all coming this morning.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, item three is the Foster Care Funds for Social Services, Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. Good morning, sir.
Chairman, Commissioner. Coming for you today, we're requesting additional foster care funds, remit board for the children who are in the custody of the Department of Social Services. I might be happy to ask, answer any questions that you may have regarding that. We provided some justification in your packet that you should have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
All right, questions from the board?
This chair.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, where's this money coming from?
This money?
You reimbursed 50% from the feds, and then 86 from, well, from the state funds, and 86 from the feds and state also. So, is this money you having, or this money you coming down, this money you taking out of what you already have?
This is money that we're requesting, additional money from the county. The reimbursement is that we have to expend the funds in order to get the reimbursement, and on 4E, we get approximately 80%. That changes a little bit each month with the penetration rates, and the foster care funds, we would get 50% back on that.
So this is how much, this is 442,000 over, how much was in your budget for this last, for this, for this year?
Yes.
So, I mean, how much was that?
Our total budget?
Yeah.
I have those numbers right in front of me for this year. I've got.
Ballpark.
This year's budget, ballpark, we had, I think, around 860,000.
For foster care?
Yes.
So now we're going up to 1.2 million?
Yeah, and it's two different, you got 4B and 4E. They have different reimbursement rates.
Yes.
4B is probably the higher one in your budget, Jeff, your original budget.
Right, those costs are higher.
Right.
And it's just, and it just depends on what children, what they're eligible for, there's different eligibility requirements, and we have to determine them eligible for what eligibility requirements they are, because if we get audited, and they were supposed to be 4B and they were 4E, we would have to pay all of that money back. So, if we could make everyone 80%, we would, but, you know, they don't always meet that requirement. And it just depends on the needs of the children and the particular funding source in which they're eligible for. I think we spoke about in our justification, some of the severe trauma that we're seeing with children, that we're having to take custody of for those reasons.
Right.
And those treatments are very expensive, and also, we spoke about our family foster homes. You know, we're losing them for good reasons, you know, we're seeing more substance abuse effective infants, that's not a good reason, but, you know, a lot of times, in those cases, those children come up for, are cleared for adoption, and those homes will adopt those children, and then they will, you know, they.
Drop them.
Don't want to, you know, continue to be licensed to foster. And it's hard to get new foster homes in, you know, regular conditions, let alone with the pandemic. I mean, those private placements are much more expensive than what our licensed homes are, and those rates are set by the state, and so that's what we have to, that's what we have to pay, there's not even room for negotiation.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, I'm a little confused in terms of how these funding mechanisms work, so to get it back up to the macro level, this is, you're requesting another half a million dollars?
442,000 dollars, yes.
450, close enough, okay. Then afterwards, are we reimbursed by the state and the federal government?
What we do is, when we spend it, so.
Right.
We report those in our monthly financial reporting.
Right.
And then those revenues will come back in after.
Will come back, okay.
Yes.
So, so, so we're going to take this out of fund balance, and some of it will come back into, into.
Right.
Eighty to.
Approximately, you know.
Fifty to 86% depending.
Yes. You'll have approximately, with those numbers, 287, 288,000 dollars will be returning back into fund amounts if you, if, if all of it is expended. These are what our projections are. Like we say, you know, we don't know what situation is going to come from day to day with reports that we get with children, and what type of needs that they'll have. You know, in November, I think we took 15 children, and that was an extremely high month for us, but the liability of leaving children in homes that are unsafe.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
We know that, so. But yes, that's, that's how the, you know, we, we don't get the reimbursement until we expend it.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
Jeff, we're pretty much obligated to have to do this, is that correct? If we don't give you the funding, what's these kids got to go? What happens then?
We're still going to have to pay, we're obligated to pay for them in board if they're in our custody, we're responsible for their care and well-being, remit board being one of those, food, clothing. So yes, you know, the county is obligated to, you know, pay for remit board out of the, with these funds.
Commissioner Liner, I think, I think one of the telltale signs, if you look at Jeff's month-over-month report he provided, it's back in the attachment. I think when you're, when you're dealing, and I'll just go back to like November of 2020 or December of 2020, where you have your full report data in, you know, 109, 113 children. If you remember, when Mr. Flowers came, for the same reason, three or four years ago, we were putting more, more money in because we were at 70 kids. Now we're at 113. So this program's one in the budget each year, Jeff. We spend a lot of time, because it's not just these payments, it's the staffing levels.
Yes.
It's the other services that have to be provided by DSS. I mean, this program's really, really grown, and I think, as you're saying, Jeff, it's not getting any easier, because you got less foster homes, and you're looking at more intensive care for children.
Right.
Most times out of the county, when you're in that scenario.
Yes. I think you'll be seeing in our budget proposals, you know, we're having to place children further away, you know, those specialized treatments aren't localized, and, you know, that requires travel back and forth to seeing children. You know, we've got children placed out of states, because, you know, they have pretty severe issues that we can't find placement for here in our state. Try to get their needs met, you know, we're working with Trillium to try to, you know, meet the needs of the, you know, the children that we're seeing coming into care, they're even having to stand up, you know, they just told us on a call two or three weeks ago about new treatment facilities that are open for children due, because they're seeing, you know, an increased need for those services, but that takes time. And then, these children, they're, you know, it's hard to find permanence, you know, we are, we get children, and they're leveled, and then we try to find a placement, try to step them down to address their behavior needs, once they're, you know, maybe the crisis is averted, but you've still got long-term needs to help them reach baseline to hopefully be adopted, but, you know, a lot of times, we're seeing gaps, when there's a step down, and then they'll have to go to a placement where, you know, there's, they can't, they're not trained to meet their needs, they do the best they can, and then they end up reverting right back to that crisis level, and then they have to go to that top level. So, you know, it's a real strain with staff seeing that, you know, moving them, trying to assist children to get them to baseline to where they can try to receive, get permanence. Those are just some examples that we have.
Commissioner Liner?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're at, Jeff, I, you know, wholeheartedly, but I don't think the public does.
That's fine, I'll be happy to.
And, and that's what I want to make sure they understand, you know, we're obligated for this, and this is a lot of money that's put out there, and it's growing, and it's probably going to continue to grow, because we're seeing more each day.
Right.
And everything else. I mean, this is a, this is a quarter of a million dollars that we're going to put in this budget, out of taxpayer dollars, that we're not getting reimbursed from the state or the feds, not counting the 800-some-odd thousand we put in your original budget, that's only, we're not getting all of that back.
No, we don't have.
So the public needs to be aware of what's happening, of what's transpiring. It's not something, it's not a program we're picking up, that we have, you know, this is something that we have to do for the future of these kids and the problems, and a lot of it is being generated by the pandemic now. I mean, you can see it's grown, we've grown, over the last three years, we've grown 40, 40 kids, more or less, and everything else, so. Now, I'm not saying don't want to do it, I want to make sure the public is aware, because we got some issues coming ahead of us, and we're getting into that session for tax, for our budget coming up, so this is just an example of what's going to have to be looked at.
You're seeing this issue, you know, not just in Craving County, all across the state. You know, our staff, we always try to, when we have children coming to care, try to find an alternative placement to where a relative or a kinship placement can hopefully take these children in, if they have to be removed from their biological parents or the caretakers that we come into contact with them in, but sometimes their needs are so great that, you know, even with services provided in the home, that's just not possible, you know, where we may have to remove them for some time to try to get them, you know, to a level and work with the parents to where they can eventually come back in, but sometimes that takes, you know, months, and those costs are very expensive. But hopefully, in the long run, what it will be is that we get those children to where those behaviors can be managed by those individuals, but sometimes it's not, but where we want to get them managed to where, you know, we could try to get them to an adoptive home and to where we can find permanence.
What would you say, Jeff, out of, just say 100 children, how many will be reunited with their parents on the, on average?
That's.
Over half of them, or is it adopting out more?
I would, you know, I'd have to go find the statistics, Chairman. You know, always, when we get children that come into care, the plan is always reunification with their parents, unless it's very extreme circumstances, and we don't see that very often. We even go above and beyond to try to do reunification with parents, because we feel that's the right thing to do. We want to try to put children back with their parents when we can. You know, I, sometimes these cases are very tough, it makes it hard. You know, I think we spoke about, the opioid epidemic is really, you know, a big driver in this. I mean, almost half of our children are in our care because of opioid involvement. I think if you go back and look in 2016, 2017, you'd probably see that number drop, you know, a low percentage. And those cases are tough, you know, with substance abuse illness, it's not always a straight line to recovery, and there's, you know, step forward, some steps back, and by all the time, you're weighing the balance of, you know, how long do, you know, when do we find permanence for the child? You know, it really is tough, so. You know, mental, mental health issues as well, as the Commissioner Liner said, sometimes during the pandemic, well, not sometimes, but during the pandemic, you know, there's been interruptions in treatment, and our treatments, our treatment is delivered, and structure's very important, you know, for individuals who are, you know, dealing with those two illnesses. But I would have to get you some statistics on that, I'm just trying to paint a picture.
I think you gave us the answer. Your, your goal is to have, to reunite them with their parents.
Right.
And we understand that, but we do know there are cases too, that that's probably, if, if parents do not clean up, if it's because of substance abuse, you're not going to put that child back in that environment either.
No, you know, we're also with our children in foster care involved, you know, they're all in front of, under the jurisdiction of the courts, so there is oversight there. But, you know, when we can, if, you know, we have parents that make progress, and they show sustained progress, that's, of course, what we want to do. I mean, we do have that. I'm not going to say that we don't, we're doing those issues, you know, sometimes we have no other issues where they don't make the corrections necessary in order to have their children in their place back into their homes, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Merritt? Not, do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of 442,439. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Have a good day, buddy.
Thank you.
Item four is our Planning Department subdivision for approval. Don Bumgarner, good morning, sir.
Good morning. We're here this morning to request approval of the Donald Leonard Stewart subdivision. The planning board met back on February 25th and recommended its approval. It is a subdivision that is owned by Mr. Donald Stewart. It was surveyed by Terry Wheeler. It's located over in Township 3 off Russell Road. It contains three lots on six acres of property, and the subdivision will be served by the county's water system and individual septic systems. We're here this morning to request approval by the board.
All right, any questions for Mr. Bumgarner? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Here none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yes, sir.
You have there before you, pending appointments, please take note of them, Commissioners, please help us in reaching out to citizens to fill those. Under current appointments today, we have a list, first one would be the Clean Suite, Ms. Julie Thompson. I have talked to Ms. Thompson, she has shown a desire to serve. If it's all right with the board, I'd like to ask that she be nominated, are there any other nominations? Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. Next is the Craving County Child Protection Team, per Mr. Merritt, asking that Ms. Jenny Cook be appointed, will have any other nominations? Here none. Ms. Cook would be nominated. Next would be the Board of Health, Mr. Ronald May.
I'd like to nominate Dr. May.
Okay, we have a nomination for Dr. May, are there any other nominations? Here none, Mr. May will be accepted by acclamation. Next, the Highway 70 Quarter.
I would like to appoint Bobby Darden.
All right, we have Mr. Bobby Darden, are there any other nominations? Here none, he will be accepted by acclamation. All right, next is the Fire Tax Commissioners, I will take this by Commissioner's district. First would be Township 7, Jackie McKinney. Commissioner Booker, are you okay with that?
Yes, I'd like to nominate him.
Okay. Any other nominations? Accepted by acclamation. Next, Commissioner Mark, you have Terry Gaskins and Tommy Cowan for Township 2.
Yeah. They have that as Little Swift Creek, you sure that's not Tri-Community on Tommy, Terry Gaskins?
I'll have to go back and.
Yeah, I think it's Tri-Community.
Okay.
Okay.
Tommy Cowan on Little Swift Creek, I'll reappoint.
All right, any other nominations? Here none, they accepted by acclamation. Commissioner Mark, also Mr. Sammy Lilly for Township 1.
Yes, I'd appoint him.
All right, any other nominations? He accepted by acclamation. I think you said, Commissioner Mark, you're working on this, this one here, the next one for Tri-Community?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to defer that one. Next would be the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, we will also take them by Commissioner's district. First one would be Commissioner Booker, you have Mr. Chance and Mr. Baylock.
Yes, I'd like to nominate both of those.
All right, any other nominations? Here none, they accepted. Next would be Commissioner McCabe, Milton Everett.
Yes, I'd like to reappoint Milton Hurd.
All right, are there any other nominations? Here none, he's accepted by acclamation. For Township 3, which is in my district, Donald Heath, I would ask that he be re-nominated, reappointed. Are there any other nominations? Here none, he's accepted by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Spurco from.
I would appoint Mr. Spurco, and also Vanceboro, Dennis Smith, and Keith Morris.
All right, you've heard the nominations, are there any other ones? Here none, they are accepted by acclamation. All right, next you have the, the next page upcoming, terms that are expiring in April, you see that, the Volunteer Agriculture District, the Regional Aging Advisory Board, and Adult Care Home Advisory Board. Any other appointments to bring before the board today? Here none, next on the agenda is the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
I have two items for your consideration this morning. The first is an offer to purchase property owned by the county. I will note, this is not property that the county acquired through the tax foreclosure process, it is a very small strip of property that is located between, we call the Harvey Mansion, a couple of blocks that way, adjacent to the convention center. And it's actually a strip of land that I don't believe anyone with the county knew that we owned until the owners of the Harvey Mansion brought it to our attention. It's not separately listed in the tax department, nor does it have any type of tax value. And the short version of what happened, or what has transpired, is the Harvey Mansion changed hands late last year, the new owners, and part of their due diligence and title exam discovered that this small strip of property is still owned by the county. They would like to purchase it and add it to the parcel they already own for various reasons, I think it's pretty, pretty obvious. It's a strip that, from my perspective anyway, does not appear to have any value to the county. It is outside of the convention center campus, there are parking lots and sidewalks and things like that, it would be difficult to incorporate it into what we own. And furthermore, the strip is subject to two easements, which practically means I don't know that the county could legally do a whole lot with it. So, I'm after talking through all these issues with management team and the new owner, the new owner decided to make an offer to purchase, it is in your agenda packet. It's, it is in the form that we use for county-owned tax foreclosure parcels, and it'll follow the same process, it's just a little, little bit different how we got here. So, the contract is before the board for consideration of initial approval. There is a proposed resolution in your agenda packet, should the board decide to move forward with this, we would need to adopt the resolution. Then we would put the property out for upset bids, as we, we usually do, and it will come back before the board for final approval.
All right, are there any questions for our attorney?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
This amount, this is $1,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this an amount that they offered to us, or did we, did we set that amount?
They offered that to us, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, Chairman Jones, I, I looked at this property, it's in my district, and it's really of no value to us, we can't do anything with it, it's, you can't build on it, you can't, it's, it's literally just a scrap piece of, small piece of property, so I think it would be in our best interest. If it's going to help the people who are going to redevelop this closed, this facility's been closed since the hurricane, and they're looking to get it redeveloped, and they need this piece to go as part of that, so I strongly recommend that we go ahead with this.
Okay, any other questions? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, it is to adopt the resolution for approving the transaction and authorizing the process for upset. the process for upset bids. All those in favor, signify and say an aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed.
Uh, thank you. The second item for your consideration is, uh, what I will call a brief update on the status of the revisions to the county's various land use ordinances. Um, as the board may recall, um, several years ago, the General Assembly adopted a new chapter 160D to the general statutes and, uh, basically, um, the General Assembly has, uh, consolidated, updated, streamlined, uh, all the laws that impact, uh, local government, uh, zoning, subdivision, any type of, uh, land use regulations. In turn, uh, essentially every, uh, city and, and county in the state and, and any other local governments that might happen to have, um, land use regulations are having to, uh, basically refit their, their local rules, their local ordinances. Um, the board authorized us to move forward with that process, uh, last fall. The process, uh, is well underway. I'm afraid a lot of us are having 160D nightmares as we, we work through the statutes. But, um, the plan is to wrap all of our various land use ordinances into one chapter in the Craven County Code and have a consistent, uh, set of administrative provisions insofar as applications and, and, you know, appeals and things of that nature. Um, we are in the process of delivering, uh, the, the first working draft, uh, to the planning board. They will, um, review that and consider it in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then after that review, um, it'll put the issue, um, squarely back to this board. Uh, my suggestion is as the board contemplates, uh, your budget work sessions, that you consider tacking, uh, 160D discussion onto one of those sessions, um, we can, we can get as detailed as the board would like. It is a, a massive project and a massive rewrite and, uh, I really want the board to have, um, ample opportunity to review the work product, uh, to ask questions and to have any discussion that the board would, would like to have. We could certainly do it during a regular session, uh, but I would anticipate it to be, um, perhaps a lengthy discussion, so it may be more appropriate for a work session. When we have the discussion and the questions answered, um, in the, uh, month of June, we'll look toward, um, having a public hearing, uh, and having the finished product before the board for your consideration. I think we'll probably dance around the budget adoption process and this may be first and the budget second, depending on the progress on that or, or vice versa. We do need to have the final project approved, uh, in June because the new, uh, 160D statute is effective July 1st. So we need to meet that deadline and that's the deadline we're on. Um, I'm glad to answer any questions, um, but this is just, uh, in the way of an update and a suggestion for how we, we need to consider moving forward between now and the 1st of July.
Questions for the attorney? All right, so I think it's a recommendation by the attorney and staff that we take this up during our, um, budget work sessions at some point. So here no objection from the board. That will be included in, um, our schedule for that week then. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, before we recess, uh, board, I did have one commissioner that wanted to, uh, share one thing if we may. Vice Chair Booker?
Good, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Saturday morning, I attended a meeting in James City and I, I just wanted to share this with the board, but more importantly, I want the public to hear this so they know what's going on. There's a project that's beginning and it's not, um, with one organization, but it's really three. It's the Community College is the support organization, uh, the Department of Transportation is heavily involved and the James City Community Organization. What this is, is a training program which will begin, uh, tentatively on May 1st or the first week of May. It will go for six weeks. It will be four nights a week. And what this is designed to do is to train people who are underemployed and unemployed. Excuse me, let me repeat that. Underemployed or unemployed people who would like to get involved with jobs that are going to be available as a result of the, the, all the construction that's going to go on in James City. Um, it's going to be, like I said, I think it's five weeks, four nights a week for three hours. It'll start at six o'clock and go till nine o'clock. Uh, they're going to learn math. They're going to learn squares, rules, fractions, decimals. They're going to learn construction safety, accident present, prevention, hazardous chemicals, flaggers, understanding paving, careers and heavy equipment operation. That'll just be an introduction to that. So I want everybody to be aware of this. Um, the Community College is going to support it. They're going to provide some of the trainers. Um, there was a good turnout of people from James City and, and what was pointed out, I think is really important to understand, so far, right in the, at the first intersection, the first light, we've had a McDonald's, a convenience store, excuse me, and a, um, uh, what's the restaurant that never closes?
Waffle House.
Yeah, Waffle House. Those businesses are already closed. They employed a lot of people. You probably don't realize, but I imagine between the Waffle House 24/7, they probably had 20, 30 employees. McDonald's probably had 10 to 20. All these folks are now out of work and there will be more coming. More, more jobs are going to be lost. So, uh, this is an opportunity for people who want to get involved in a new, uh, and it doesn't cost them anything. They want to get involved in a new career. Uh, they need to be aware and, um, they can contact me or they can contact the James City, um, Community Organization or the person from the Community College who's really spearheading it is Greg Singleton. So, uh, I was, it was a, a organizational meeting, uh, as to who's going to do what and I thought it was well done. Greg led the meeting, but I'm excited about the opportunity for people who live in James City in particular, but those who worked in James City who are going to lose jobs or have lost jobs, this is an opportunity for them to get back on board and, uh, get a, a career going in another direction. So I just wanted to add that, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I'm going to make a comment. Those jobs in James City, is just for the people that got, lost a job in James City?
Sorry, in the mic.
Those jobs that in, in, um, um, can't think of any.
Jobs that they're training for?
Yeah, those jobs just for the people that got laid off from McDonald's and, and Waffle House is for anybody in Craven County.
Anybody can, can join this training program. They're going to limit it to 12 people in a class, so in, in this whole deal, 12 people. That's all that they can accommodate to do this training. So it, the first 12 people that sign up are going to get to do it and they don't have to be from James City.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, board, anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners in regular session? Here none. Uh, County Manager, if we recess to nine forty-five, is that adequate time?
Yes, sir, that'd be great. And just a reminder to the board, we do have a vaccine clinic going on, um, so we're going to be in the back, uh, where we were, I believe in December against the river and parking will be a little challenging today. If you can't find one in the main lot just across the streets, our satellite lot, you can look there. Um, other than that, sir, we're, nine forty-five would be good.
All right, we recess to nine forty-five at the Craven County Convention Center.